Good evening, the Thursday, February 28, 2019, regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gooding?
Here.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Commissioner Seisan?
Here.
All Commissioners are present. And could we have a motion for adoption of tonight's agenda, please?
I make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Consent calendar, we have one item tonight, that's the approval of draft action minutes from the meeting of January 24, 2019. Could we have a motion to approve unless anyone would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? No? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve those draft action minutes.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Carries. Oral communications, is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the Commission on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along. Written communications, we do have one item from Hensley Event Resources. This is regarding Crocker Industrial Park and it will be addressed under an item on the agenda pertaining to our workshop on outdoor storage regulations in Crocker Park. And that being said, let's move right into that workshop, please.
Okay, good evening, Commission. So, tonight's workshop, we wanted to give you guys an overview of the regulatory context of the Crocker Park prohibition against outdoor storage and a general overview of the land use policies applicable to Crocker Park and how the zoning ordinance implements those policies. And we'll also kind of briefly touch on the occurrence of outdoor storage in the park today. And the reason we're talking about this this evening is because staff did receive an application for a zoning text amendment to allow outdoor storage in some form in the park. So we wanted to address kind of these larger issues, give you guys some context prior to the public hearing. So as most of you all know, we are in Crocker Park now. The park has almost four million square feet of industrial space, these are mostly in one and two-story buildings. And we have very large average lot sizes, pretty big range in buildings, but we're mostly looking at, you know, several thousand square feet of square footage. And I think the most important thing that we'll talk about tonight is the garden-style industrial park design of the park. This is discussed and emphasized in the general plan. General plan references innovative and pioneering landscape architect Lawrence Halperin, who, as far as we know, was instrumental in the design of the landscape of the park. And so what garden-style industrial park typically means is, you know, these are spaces, public spaces, private spaces, that are artistically composed and ecologically sensitive. So to really evoke a feeling of nature within these built-out areas. So just again, to orient you to the park, this is a view down the valley. So Crocker goes all the way down to the end of West Hill Place at the very end. It's circled by our recreational trail, which is a converted rail right-of-way, as you guys know. And you can kind of see from this view that kind of green aspect. So you see residential neighborhoods and it has almost the same tree canopy as the industrial park. So you can even see from a distance that this is a park that has a lot of open area and landscaping integrated it. Here's just looking at 325 Valley, looking south. And here we are at West Hill Place and Valley, or West Hill Drive, excuse me. So we'll kind of go over the primary general plan policies that address the park and are relative to why the park looks the way it does. So the general plan has a chapter dedicated to sub-area policies. And Crocker Park has several that reference the garden industrial park landscape design as being an integral component of the character of the park and something that should be retained and maintained over time. So I've given you a couple references there from the sub-area policy chapter, there's two policies. And looking at the implementing zoning, we've kind of showed you how those particular policies are reflected in the zoning. So in the zoning district is the TC-1 district. So when we're saying, you know, garden industrial park style, that's borne out in the fact that we have a landscaping minimum requirement of 15 percent of the site, front yard minimum of 25 feet. So typically, that's where a lot of the landscaping is occurring. So from the street view, buildings are set back, there's, you know, a lot of lush greenery. We have rain at least. As well as the lot coverage maximum at 60 percent. So a lot of the site is intended to be left open and maintained without any structures and with landscaping on it. Equipment, which may be in the exterior of a building, also has to be screened, there are no setback exceptions, they have to comply with setbacks. So screened, fenced, and/or landscaped. So that's how the zoning district regulations implement those particular policies. Moving on to the more pertinent policies to the outdoor storage regulations, so there's a policy that states major business activities must be conducted inside buildings. This typically, or this has informed the performance standard in Crocker Park that basically says, "All aspects of the day-to-day business operations have to occur inside a building, including all storage of materials and products, with the exception of a few discrete types of land uses that are permitted in the park and have incidental outdoor storage relative to loading and offloading or commercial recreation, parking cars, of course, outside the building." There's also a policy that I've included in here, because we'll kind of talk about it later, that, you know, recognizing the fact that in Crocker Park, there may be businesses that use or store hazardous materials. And it mentions that the city, of course, is going to work closely with responsible agencies to make sure those types of materials are being stored safely. So again, outdoor storage not allowed in Crocker Park. Obviously, that does not mean it does not occur. And just to kind of give you an overview of how code enforcement works in Brisbane, we are complaint-based. We do not proactively go out and enforce based on staff observations. The only time that a proactive enforcement might occur is if we are doing our, for example, like a stormwater inspection, where we go out and make sure that sewer, storm drains are not being blocked, that litter or other refuse is not getting into the storm drain system. So that is one example of where we might proactively send staff out, and then that may lead to enforcement if things are being stored outside and violating our stormwater protection laws. And then typically, you know, enforcement staff, we try not to be punitive, we try to work with the property owner or tenant to get to a solution. So it really is a kind of cooperative and solution-oriented process here. And then the other way that we can kind of get involved in outdoor storage is if someone submits a building permit or encroachment permit or any other permit, where we have a leg up to say, "Okay, we can do a site visit, we can condition the permit, if we see there's a violation, we can require it be cleared up before we issue the permit," and then inspect it over time to make sure they're complying. So it's kind of a quick and dirty overview of the background of why Crocker Park looks the way it looks, why outdoor storage has, by and large, for the majority of Crocker Park's existence, been banned. I should note, there is a couple instances of non-conforming uses that have existed for a long time, have a right to operate as a non-conforming use at a site that has outdoor storage associated with it. So, you know, you may see outdoor storage in Crocker and it may not be an unpermitted use. It could be associated with a non-conforming use, where we usually will still impose restrictions on that. So even if it's a, say, a contractor's storage yard, it'll have to have screening and fencing and, you know, restricted to a certain area of the site, for example, that we can then enforce because it's associated with a non-conforming use. So, if there's any questions, I know I kind of went through that quickly, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Otherwise, we anticipate having a public hearing in April on the actual zoning text amendment. And, you know, tonight isn't a public hearing, so I didn't want to touch really on the specifics of that request, that'll be for the public hearing. But if there are any kind of broader questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Julia. Commissioner Seisan, do you have any questions for staff?
Um, not really, I guess we're just, I think we'll just wait for the public hearing tomorrow and more, but I think it's-
Is your mic on?
Is it?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, so I'll just wait for the public hearing and see what comes out of that, but I think, I don't know, seems pretty straight and easy.
Okay. Commissioner Gooding?
If you can help me learn a bit more about the reasons why the zoning ordinance presently reads like it does about outdoor storage, is the primary public interest here just maintaining the, or preventing ISOs, to be blunt?
Yeah, I think preventing ISOs, but also, I think the ordinance is very mindful on how much of the site is occupied by, you know, if not a structure, at least, you know, if something's fenced, it has the appearance of a structure perhaps. I mean, I think the zoning ordinance really is focusing on providing open areas within a business park and making sure that those open areas are landscaped and not necessarily hardscape or... So I think it's tied to aesthetics, it's tied to the overall kind of, yeah, the physical kind of form that we want to see on sites out there.
Have any previous planning commissions, any of you know of, had this issue come up of suggestions or considerations to change the ordinance to, with respect to outdoor storage?
Not to my knowledge, in the time I've been here. I know Ken, do you have a memory of that?
The only one that comes to mind is not, it's a different kind of animal, if you will, it's a non-conforming situation.
So no, this will be somewhat new ground, and I think if Julia wants to go back to the general plan, sort of, you know, policy related to, you know, containing the next one about the land use. Basically, that CP point 24 there is going to be, you know, the general plan basis for the zoning. Any commission action, you'd have to be making interpretation, if you were to allow something outdoor, then it still substantially complies with that general plan guidance and language.
So we've had the zoning strictures in place with respect to outdoor storage for 35, 40, or whatever the Crocker Park-
Yes.
Forty years-ish?
Forty-ish, yeah.
And are there any sort of, you know, general, is business evolving in any way that suggests that this kind of change is needed throughout the area, or is it on an individual basis?
Well, I think, you know, certainly activities change over time there in terms of what kind of businesses operate in the park. I hesitate to generalize in terms of, you know, is there a trend that's prevailing throughout the park? I'm not aware of any particular trends that I think you could generalize and we can certainly...
Yeah, and I don't want to get out ahead of the public hearing at all, and I realize-
Oh, no, I mean, in terms of just generalizing-
But I'm just curious whether there's anything sort of going on out there about the kinds of businesses that we're, you know, hosting that drives any sort of broad need for this kind of change, or if it's to accommodate the occasional application for some, you know, narrower, more unique purpose.
I would put it in the latter category. That's just my assessment.
Thanks.
Commissioner Gomez?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
So, if the outdoor storage seems to be allowed under certain circumstances right now, is that right?
No, only, only non-conforming, well, there's two, two things going on. One is if a delivery comes to a site, the products are coming or going, yes, they can sit outside for some limited period of time while they're being, you know, moved, shipped, for example, you can store something temporarily. So there's that element of kind of a time component, a timely component. But in terms of permanent storage or areas devoted to permanent storage, the only cases are, as Julia pointed out, projects that had some non-conforming rights were grandfathered, primarily related to uses that were permitted that may not be permitted anymore in the park, like the, I believe, that contractor's storage activity being outdoor. One business in particular we-
Oh, okay, so there's just one business?
It's, it's I'm aware of, unless you're aware of anymore.
Got it. I have another question.
Okay. I wondered if there had been incidental problems in the more recent past, to your knowledge?
Like in general, what our code enforcement activity's been like in the past couple of years?
With regard to outdoor storage in Crocker, anything come to mind at all?
I mean, I-
I'm sorry to be asking you, because I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I just wondered if we'd had anything egregious to report that you could think of?
We've had enforcement activity in the last couple of years.
We have, okay.
I can't-
That's all right.
It's not to earlier years.
I wondered if it was just totally an anomaly and almost never happens, or if it's something that requires-
I think it's an issue that crops up periodically.
Right.
And again, and my experience with it is not so much that the one business side that had some rights to do outdoor storage had its own sort of suite of issues, but it sometimes got to an issue of, you know, incidental and shipments that would be, areas that would be, you could have an area product outside that could be dropped off or shipped, and, you know, sometimes a question of how long materials were sitting outdoor before they were sort of in transit versus being kind of permanently stored there. So there's always a little bit of a judgment kind of aspect to that, and I think that's cropped up periodically over time, because, you know, we're very aware about not having these things just kind of accumulate and become sort of a de facto, you know, informal and recognized storage area outside.
So an incidental use could be related to an internal remodel where there's staging of materials on-site for active work by a contractor for-
Yes, and they're telling temporary-
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the area discussing the screening of mechanical equipment, I wondered, we've all seen rooftop mechanical equipment, but I'm also aware there is mechanical equipment on the ground. Is there a limitation to size that is permitted for mechanical equipment on the ground?
No. So there's no size limitation, but like I said, there's no setback encroachments allowed, so whatever, the size of the equipment, it has to be located out of setbacks. And then the screening, we always require screening to go along with it. For smaller equipment, sometimes we'll just do landscape screening. For larger equipment, like I'm thinking of a CO2 tank that was recently installed in the 400 block of Valley, it was tall, it was like eight feet tall. So we required fencing and screening with native vegetation to make sure that any people viewing up slope from the ridge were not just seeing a exposed eight-foot-tall tank.
Okay, and so coincidentally, you brought up something that I was going to ask next, which is, in the correspondence we received, propane tank or tanks was mentioned, and you talk about a CO2 tank. When someone is granted permission to store on-site, does that go through a permit? And does that, I would assume, but I'd like to know, if that has to be vetted by the fire department for safety reasons?
So I want to clarify, something like propane tanks that are kind of loose and they're intended to go into another thing that's different, we regulate that differently, that from a permanently affixed, something like a tank that is actually piped to equipment inside a building that is permanently affixed, has a foundation, that's not considered outdoor storage, that's a mechanical equipment, basically, that's how we treat it.
And thank you for clarifying that.
Sure. So that's a building permit application, and it goes through ministerial review by planning, for zoning compliance, you know, North County Fire for fire code, safety as well as building, and if necessary, public works or any other department that needs to get their hands on it.
My only other comment on this would be, I would be concerned where we talk about the footprint and the lot coverage, that if there was any outdoor storage, that it wouldn't be compromising the number of usable parking spaces that are required for any commercial building. So that's all I have. Anyone else? More questions? No?
Yeah, and apologies for, so the letter that you referenced was sent from the applicant of the zoning text amendment, Hensley Event Resources. And they kind of touch on their general aims behind their application and concerns with how the prohibition on outdoor storage has impacted their business operations. So that's what is addressed in the letter.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we move on to items initiated by staff. We have tonight a tree ordinance update. Could we have a staff report, please? And I'd additionally then like to hear from our two subcommittee members who might be able to answer some questions and elaborate further on any items they feel should be of interest.
Yes, thank you. This is an informational item for the Planning Commission on a draft ordinance to update the tree regulations contained in Title 12 of the municipal code. Also be making a presentation to the Open Space and Ecology Committee, or OSEC, at their meeting, which is coming up in late March. This update was initiated following a letter from OSEC to City Council in late 2017, in which they expressed their concern about the number of trees that had been recently removed from private property in Brisbane. City Council then directed staff to consider updating the city's tree removal ordinance. A subcommittee was formed last summer, as you know, and that consisted on the Planning Commission part of Commissioners Gomez and Gooding, and then from OSEC, Barbara Ebel. And the draft ordinance that you have before you represents a consensus or general consensus of that subcommittee, although there were a couple items where a subcommittee member expressed a desire to go a bit further with the proposed regulations, and I'll get into that a bit more in a minute. Note that this is just an informational item, and so no formal action is required on the part of the Commission. As I mentioned, I'll also present this to OSEC, and then it would go on after that onto City Council for their consideration. And the Planning Commission or OSEC may provide comments in addition to what the subcommittee has put forward to you. This shows just a summary, outline of the ordinance sections and the proposed ordinance. I'll note that the applicability section is new, and I'll go through each of these sections in just a bit more detail here. First, the title of the chapter has been changed from "Tree Regulations" to "Private Tree Regulations" to reflect that the ordinance is applicable to privately-owned trees. Public trees are under the authority of the city engineer, and that has always been the case, actually. So this clarifies that internal conflict, if you will, that exists in the current ordinance. The Purpose section has been updated to indicate that one of the purposes is to maintain the urban forest consistent with the goals of the Climate Action Plan and the general plan. Also, the statement regarding maintenance of private trees that may encroach into the public right-of-way has been revised to be consistent with the provisions that come later in the ordinance, and I'll talk more about that towards the end. On applicability, this, as I mentioned, is an entirely new section. It states upfront what the chapter does or does not apply to. It applies to private trees, trees in the public right-of-way, as I've mentioned, are generally not subject to the ordinance, they're under the city engineer's purview. But there is a caveat to that, and that is, if there's a maintenance agreement attached to a particular tree. Other categories to which the ordinance does not apply includes juvenile unprotected trees that are not restricted by a permit of some kind, certain trees that are subject to state public utilities jurisdiction, and trees otherwise addressed by a separate development permit, such as a design permit that might come through the Planning Commission. These non-applicable categories are not new to the ordinance, but they've been moved around, essentially consolidated into this chapter more upfront, so it's right at the beginning for clarity. A number of definitions have been added, including such things as multi-truck trees, juvenile trees, invasive species, and non-protected mature trees. Also, the definition of protected tree has been updated for clarity. Some of the items listed under protected tree in the current ordinance were essentially redundant with each other. The section "Severe trimming and tree removals" was extensively restructured to clearly define and delineate which actions require a notice to the city versus those for which a permit is required. Most of these were just grouped together as a single permit requirement in the past, but this separates that a bit. So the ordinance would have a kind of tiered structure. Certain trees, such as juvenile trees, that are not in another protected class are exempt, as indicated in the applicability section. Then this section separates out other actions into either notice required or permit required. Under the proposed draft, trees that are neither in a protected class nor outright exempt would be, would require a seven-day notice to the city prior to removal, but it would not require a permit. This would allow times for staff to verify the proposed removal. Severe trimming has been included in this category as well, whereas previously it was under permit required. A thing to note on that is that the owner would assume responsibility if such trimming results in the death of the tree. If that occurs, the tree would be subject to the replacement requirements, just as a normal permit required tree would be. So this section would also include two, up to two non-protected mature trees, and more than that would require a permit, or more than that within a 12-month period. And this is essentially the same as the current ordinance. Permit-required section applies to protected trees, and that could be by species or by discretionary permit or protected otherwise, as outlined in the definition. Would also apply to three or more non-protected trees within a 12-month period, except for invasive species. The permitting process has been defined, which includes provisions for content of an application and findings for granting a permit. The findings would replace what was referred to as criteria for evaluation of the proposed removal. Additionally, subsections for decision on an application and notification requirements have been added, along with standard conditions subsection. Most notably, really in this section is a noticing procedure of 300 feet for tree removals, and then under the conditions of approval, trees would now have at least a one-to-one replacement requirement. In the current ordinance, the tree replacements are not mandatory, there is no notice required. In the current ordinance, the tree replacements are not mandatory, there is no notice required on a tree removal permit, as it stands now. Emergency approvals and exceptions for in-loop payment, off-site planting, and financial hardship are also now addressed in this section. And as I mentioned, there were a couple differences, opinion with one of the subcommittee members related to, and that essentially was related to further restricting tree removals and adding more replacement trees. It was advocated that the findings for granting a permit for removal of a tree should be narrowed by eliminating the finding that states removal of the tree is necessary for economic or other enjoyment of the property. This is one of the criteria that was carried forward from the current ordinance, and it allows for discretion on the part of the city. It allows for removal of a tree that, for example, may be poorly suited species or an ill-advised location, but does not yet rise to the level of one of the other findings, and those other findings are all hazard-related, such as disease, proximity to structure, spread of pests or pathogen, or fire risk. So this is the one finding that gives some flexibility essentially for tree landscaping a site, and getting a tree potentially before it gets to that hazard state, if it was, as I mentioned, ill-advised at the start. On the topic of replacement trees, the proposed ordinance adds a mandatory provision, as I mentioned, for replacement trees for permit required tree removals, but for the classes of trees that require only a notice, or those that are outright exempt from the ordinance, replacement trees are not required, as the draft reads now. The subcommittee member advocated for requiring replacements for these classes of trees as well. Note that under the current ordinance, replacement may be required for a protected tree, but that is left to the discretion of the approving authority without criteria, as I mentioned, for when to apply that condition of approval. While the proposed ordinance would not go as far as the subcommittee member wanted in requiring replacements, it would be more rigorous than the current ordinance by expanding replacements to be mandatory for all permit required tree removals. And there are, I should mention, there are some exceptions, it's listed as a last bullet on this slide, is an in-loop payment could be accepted, the city could also accept off-site planting, or if there's financial hardship that could be demonstrated, there could be exceptions to that one-to-one requirement. The last slide on the ordinance here is, first on appeals, the community development director is named as the approving authority, and the decisions by the director may be appealed to the city manager versus naming the city manager, and that's, essentially this was a practicality, this is actually how we are managing the ordinance. The existing section on maintenance previously implied that a private party may plant trees within the public right-of-way. Occasionally, this may be required as part of a development permit, but that would be structured through that specific permit by the city's approving authority, often that's the Planning Commission, occasionally that might be City Council. So this section has been revised to more accurately reflect the requirements for maintenance of private trees that may encroach over the public right-of-way versus implying that a tree can be just planted in the public right-of-way. And then finally, the violations section and penalty section has been revised to remove the reference to revocation of a business license for a tree removal violation. Penalties are established in Title 1 of the Municipal Code and are now cross-referenced in this section, and the section also specifies additional penalties that may be imposed for a violation. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ken. I'm thinking that, I have a bunch of comments in all kinds of different pages here, because this is really comprehensive, and some of them aren't under the realm of questions, but comments, and I'm just wondering if my fellow commissioners would humor me with this, I thought maybe we could go page by page, and the two of you that served on that subcommittee could jump in, along with Ken, address some of our questions, and that way, our questions may lead to someone else coming up with the questions, so we don't jump all around. Does that work? Yes, okay. So on the first part, I'm on the first page, the background, H.1.1, anyone have any comments, questions there? Nope, okay. Second page, 1.2, summary of draft ordinance. Anyone? No. H.1.3, I have a couple questions, comments. On the paragraph at the top of the page, "Trees that are neither in a protected class nor outright excluded from the ordinance, such as invasive trees, would require a seven-day notice to the city prior to removal." Is there a size or any direction on that, a little more specific?
So this would be, it would be tied to the definition, so...
The other definitions that come later.
Well, the definitions that are embedded in the ordinance itself, essentially it splits out what's requiring a notice only versus what's a protected tree requiring a permit.
Okay, and then...
So I'll give you an example, it would be, say, a single tree that's of a mature size, mature size would be 30 inches in circumference at 24 inches above grade, that's not otherwise protected by, say, a permit condition of approval, or by the species itself, so it's a species that's not protected, it's, but it's a mature size, and it's not otherwise protected, would fall into this class, where as long as there's only one or two of them, and they haven't, they're not doing this on a serial basis, so that they haven't already done one six months ago, so this will be incumbent on staff when we get a permit to go back and check, and, okay, have they done another permit, and, you know, if so, what's the nature of that, and make sure that if they are doing this on a serial basis at that point, we put them into the permit required class, and they have to do replacements then, and we have the public notice process, so...
Okay, so as an example, someone has a large pine, they tend to grow very large, and let's say, so it's not protected, the owner doesn't like the needle mess, wants to remove it. Will this be subject to noticing to the neighbors, or is this just subject to noticing to the city?
Just to the city.
I'd like to see the neighbor subject to the notice as well, because I've seen some of those where they're close to property lines, and I think that the neighbors have a right to know. It can affect the shade, it can affect water drainage, it can affect sometimes their property in the process of removing the tree, so, and I don't know how you would quantify it, but perhaps, that's why I asked about size, perhaps any large trees removal, even if they're not protected, should have a notice over a certain size, so it's just a recommendation And it's something that I've just, I've witnessed it, so I'm familiar with that. And then moving down, "About removal of a tree necessary for economic or other enjoyment of the property," and that wording I found a little troubling, I can understand situations, and I understand my fellow commissioner over here, Commissioner Gooding, wanted to speak on that. I'd like to see that somehow reworded, because other enjoyment of the property is so broad. I'd like to see, I don't know how to change that, but something asking for quantification of why someone is doing this, rather than just saying enjoyment of the property, I don't like trees, I don't like leaves, I want my view, or, something to have to quantify why, than just say, "I enjoy removing trees," if that makes any sense. Commissioner Gooding, you want to jump in there?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to give my perspective on this, and, you know, as the City Council, when I was appointed, knows, and the tree subcommittee was told at every meeting, you know, my background is having been an officer of, or director of the HOA of one of the Ridge properties for many years, and our particular development has something in the neighborhood, I think it's over 1,000 trees, it's around 1,000 trees, and under, under a part of Ken's extremely tight, well-developed ordinance, 12.12.040i3, because we are subject to a permit, to a plan, a landscape plan, that was granted to the original developer, every tree in that property is a protected tree. So when we want to, or ask to remove a tree for any of the five enumerated criteria in 12.12.050, we are going to replace it, that's a given. So I think, in our situation, it's perhaps a bit different from somebody who just wants to take a tree out and get away with it, that's not what we would be doing in trying to make our landscape plan continue to make sense for that development as it matures. Those trees are now 20-plus years old, some of them are, many of them, most of them are fine, some of them were the wrong tree in the wrong place, for a number of reasons, one of which sometimes is, it's the only tree that pertains to that unit, and it happens to block the very nice view of that unit, that a tree 20 feet to the right would not. And since we have to replace, we'll replace the tree in a better place, and the net effect on the foliage and urban forest and canopy is zero.
So...
For reasons like that, I think it's important to keep something in the ordinance that is a criterion that the Planning Department can use to grant permission when it's not a health hazard or one of those things, but there's a really good reason for it, and the net loss to the city and the urban landscape is zero.
So again, struggling for the wording, I understand what you're saying, and it comes under that phrase, maybe there's just a different way we could think about it some more. I don't know what could go in there, do you have a suggestion?
I don't, I mean, I think to some extent, we discussed it a little bit in the subcommittee, and Paulo, correct me if, you know, you can, please chime in if you want, but it's, to some extent, we are relying on the sound of discretion and good judgment of the Planning Department to understand the spirit of this ordinance, that it is, you know, the primary spirit of which is to maintain the urban canopy and not have trees go away. And if they interpret that competently and responsibly and intelligently, I don't think the language is bad, if it can be improved, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't have any particular idea about it.
What if we said something to the extent of, "Provide good cause for economic..." It's, that word enjoyment, to me, is just...
Well, why don't we put a comma after that, "Subject to the judgment of the director, you would decide if they have good cause."
So, so all of this, this is one of, I think, four or five findings, I think five findings, and it's all subject to the discretion of the director, and so I think that good cause is essentially implicit in the permit review, and he, or she, in the future, whoever, can deny an application if that's not shown, if there's not reason for that. I think, generally, well, one thing is, I think the ordinance is now, as it's written, would be more protective against that situation where people just don't like trees in the yard and want to eliminate them, because, well, okay, I eliminate this, but I still now have to plant another tree and maintain it, so it's, you know, I'm not, I'm not seeing, I guess, where this has been taken advantage of in the past, because it is something that we consider currently, it's one of those current criteria, now we call it, but it is something that we use.
Well, it does have the word necessary, and I appreciate that, that kind of quantifies it a little better for me, when I look at the word necessary. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Yeah, I understand your concern, because let's say, you know, enjoyment of the property is subjective, let's say, you know, one applicant wants to do something that, you know, you turn down for whatever reason, and then they accuse you of being biased towards them because you let the other person do it, you know, because it's for their enjoyment versus the other person's enjoyment, so, you know, maybe if we, I understand your concern probably to put something in there to be more detailed, so that, you know, we won't be accused of being biased or arbitrary or whatnot.
I think there's also the issue of, and Ken, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but again, that is kind of, I would suspect that in any case, someone's relying on that particular finding, that if their justification is, well, I need to do this for the enjoyment of my property without any sort of descriptor, or how it adds to the enjoyment, you know, whether it's view, or whether it's privacy, or whatever it is, I would think that would be kind of a lacking sort of, in terms of our internal, what we do, right, is evaluating projects against findings, the term is, it's inherently vague, because we don't think we can outline the world of what someone might, how they might want to enjoy their property, but I think it's going to be incumbent on them to demonstrate some linkage between how they perceive the value and the use of their property, and how this particular tree impacts that, so, I don't, that's kind of is what we do as part of our day-to-day sort of activities when we evaluate these.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yeah, this just occurred to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, because you know this thing inside-out and backwards, but we're talking about one of the five criteria to allow you to grant an application to remove a tree, which is required because it's a protected tree, with, you know, or a bunch of trees in a 12-month period, but mainly this is going to be about protected trees, and by definition, every one of those has to be replaced by another tree.
Correct.
So, so none of these applications for a permit to remove a tree are resulting in a net loss of urban foliage, except for the time it takes for a tree to grow, but in the long-term picture, we're not losing trees by granting permits.
A hypothetical that was used was not a protected tree, that was the issue, right? The hypothetical that was used was a non-protected tree that could be removed.
Right, but that's a different issue than this criterion of economic use of the property. I mean, that's sort of a whole general, you know, what trees can be removed by notice versus permit, I get that distinction, but the criterion about economic use is going to apply, is going to, nobody can remove a tree for an economic purpose without replacing a tree.
Just be...
Correct.
Protected tree, so...
Right, right, so I just wanted to get that point.
And an example, say, where they have, maybe they're re-landscaping their yard, and they need to remove several trees, and they perhaps don't have room to replace them all, that's where you might come into that situation of an in-loop fee, or planting a tree elsewhere in the city, but one way or another, another tree is going to be planted.
I have a question also, I messed up on that very top paragraph about severe tree trimming, I've seen some severe tree trimming in town, I've seen one where there was nothing left but a trunk, I've seen another where all the branches on the property line were totally sheared off of about a 15, 20-foot tree. Is there anything in here that would prevent that, or address that, because there's a property owner's right... Because there's a property owner's right, if your neighbor's branches come onto your side, that you can trim it, but taking a tree, probably some of the ones I've seen are, are still juvenile, but not always, and taking all the branches off one side is structurally imperiling a tree, and, and could potentially make it dangerous, because it's unbalanced. So is there any way, I mean, it, it seems to happen, and then there's nothing to do about it. So I, I'm just looking for a guideline to say something, to, to, again, describe what severe tree trimming is with regard to property rights.
Right. So, the subcommittee discussed this at, at some length as well, as you could imagine, and, and a, a couple different examples. So, one would be a type of tree that if you essentially ended up with a twenty-foot stump, and it's, it's, for all intents and purposes, a dead tree, and then it, it falls into a permit-required tree, if it in fact would have fell into that category in the first place. Otherwise, if it's a non-protected mature tree, that would have required a notice only, would be considered a removal, and then the serial removal provisions would apply. Another example would be a London plane tree is an example, where they are, what's the term, pollarded, I want to say, where they essentially, they are trimmed back on an annual basis to these sort of sculptural knobs with no foliage left, and some people love them, some people hate them. It's, but it's a tree that, that's essentially how they are managed, and so, you know, if you take the ordinance as it is at face value, that, that would not be allowed, because you're taking off all the, the canopy, but, but this would allow for that kind of severe trimming, because it's really, it's how the tree is trained, if you will, and, and it grows back each year. So, so I, I think the flexibility is there. So if, if the trimming results in the death of the tree, it, it becomes a whole other matter at that point. But, you know, there's this gray area in between, where it's just hard to define every single case that might come up.
Right. And actually, the severe trimming I'm talking about is, is usually not done by the property owner, it's done by their neighbor.
And that becomes a civil matter between the, the two neighbors in terms of, you know, if, if it rises to the, the level of, of bringing it to court for damage of property. And so, the city does not, unless, unless it violates the ordinance, the city really doesn't get involved in, in those kind of matters.
Understood, okay. John, were you going to say something to that?
Again, and, Ken, clarify this, but again, part of the notification to the city is, you know, if someone's going to propose severe trimming, and if it's of a variety of tree that the severe trimming, it's, it's, it's not conducive to its regrowth and its, its the thriving of that tree, and that's part of what Ken does, her staff evaluates for the species too, and, and that's going to be part of the conversation of why you give the notice, and if you, you know, have a back and forth with the, the property owner that this method of, of severe trimming is, you know, likely caused the death of that tree, and so, you know, that's part of it too, as an educative, and both give staff and the property owner, who may, may be getting not good advice in terms of the managing of their, of their own sort of tree canopy, and that's, again, why we, why we suggest that notification process, so there is a little bit of back and forth between the property owner and the city.
And part of it came to mind, because we've seen some projects where there were, and that's on this page as well, proximity to structures, a, a new residential structure where it's three feet to five feet from the neighbor's tree, and we've asked for arborist reports, but we're not privy to what happens to that, and I'm wondering how the canopy survives, because that, that comes up, it's root damage is one thing, but the canopy's another, so I, I would assume staff has a way to handle that.
So I, can you repeat the question? I'm not totally sure if I...
Yes, proximity to structures, and, and what I mentioned is that we've seen several projects come through that were new residential projects, where we noted the footprint of the proposed structure has sometimes several trees, which are on the neighbor's property line, but in order to build that structure, three feet or five feet away, sometimes the, the canopy is going to be affected of, of a neighbor's tree. We've seen a couple of those, just because of odd lot configuration.
Right. So, so when you have those kind of situations, where you have a condition of approval, as you mentioned, for an arborist report, staff actually will get those as part of the project review with, with the building permit, so, so we, we do get those and are privy to, to those as well.
Okay, that's good, it just covers that base. Anything to add to subcommittee members? No? Okay. So, nope. Moving on, H.1.4, appeals, maintenance of trees, violation penalties. No? Then we go into H.1.7, the draft ordinance itself. And H.1.8, private tree regulations. H.1.9, and I'm going to bring up juvenile trees in the context of what's on the next page, H.1.10. When we talk about species-protected, California bay, coast live oak, and California buckeye. A juvenile tree is defined as less than thirty inches at twenty-four inches above grade, but I've never seen a California buckeye with a trunk more than thirty inches. They don't grow that big. So if you have a protected tree, it, it seems to me you could consider a California buckeye as a juvenile tree forever.
I, I have seen them that big and, and much bigger, and oftentimes, they're a multi-trunk tree, which, which we have added that definition to the ordinance to capture that, so if you combine those trunk cross, those trunk areas essentially and had an equivalent of that thirty-inch diameter in a multi-trunk version, then it's subject to the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, that's good clarification. Anyone else? Okay. Um, the permit-protected section, I just wanted to compliment that subcommittee, I think that was really, really well done. And removals regardless of size, that was really good. Moving on, we're on H.1.11. Anything there? Nope. Am I going too fast? I hope not. Moving H.1.13, I'm going to bring up again the, um, double I under there, replacement size shall be of a standard fifteen-gallon, gallon nursery container. My compliments to the subcommittee, I'm glad to see that. I've seen some replacement trees going on-site places where they're five-gallon containers.
I want it larger.
I, I would too, but I'm glad to see fifteen. I, I am glad. And also, on that same page, under B, talks about where large protected trees to be removed or where the site has or will be largely denuded or landscaping, the director may require replanting on more than a one-to-one basis, and/or require a larger tree replacement size. I thought that was outstanding, honestly.
I have a question. Under A, three I's, where it says that the replacement of the tree should be of the same design size, and, and it talks about the species, it'll be up to the, the director. And I know we've had certain, certain projects before us where we've tried to suggest certain species or whatnot, so this would control, I mean, so anything we suggest would be discretionary, they wouldn't have to abide by what we say.
Right, and it's, it's not to be too, not intended to be too narrow in the view, but allow, you know, creative tree selections, but we especially don't want to get into, you know, we're not going to allow invasives, and, and if, if somebody hasn't considered the mature size of a tree, and say it's, it's a very fast-growing, that's going to be quite large and is not suitable to that location, so, you know, we'll, we'll look at all those kind of criteria, and, and usually applicants are pretty receptive to that kind of feedback, because they want the best tree for the location, too.
Okay. No, I, no, I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes I know we get into the discussion about kind of pushing them into, to planting certain tree, you know, to replace what they're taking out, so, so just to know that probably we shouldn't, or we don't need to really get into that, because they do have the, you know, the, they, they can plant whatever is, is within, you know, the confines of these pages, so...
And what's useful is, you know, if it's part of a, a planning entitlement, that you're, you know, the tree removal is part of that activity, you know, the idea, instead of getting into sort of specific locations and species, the idea of what the commission's objectives are with a tree, this tree canopy, whether it's screening, or whether it's biological value, the idea of sort of articulating your, your objective, and then, then everyone has the palate, and we have the idea of what your intent is, without putting you on the spot to design a landscape plan here at a public hearing, which isn't the easiest thing for anybody to do.
May I ask, was any consideration given to dangerous trees? And, and I'll give you an example, you're looking at me like, "What are you talking about?" Having watched moving to Brisbane nineteen years ago, being warned by a neighbor close by, "You have a big black acacia in your backyard, and do you know how many of those I've seen fall?" And that's what the neighbor said, so we got the tree trimmed every two years, religiously thinned out, so the wind could go through it, and guess what? It almost fell over, we had to evacuate in a storm, and it was easily fifty feet, and the trunk, multiple trunks, were probably sixty inches or more, it was huge. And I've watched black acacias go over and over and over and over in Brisbane. It, it's a dangerous tree, because it's, it's got shallow roots, it's extremely dense, heavy, heavy wood, and so in a backyard, I would not want to see another black acacia planted anywhere close to structures, because I've watched them fall.
Right, that's, that's really all part of the consideration, and when, when we look at a replanting plan, that, that we're looking at invasiveness, which black acacia actually is...
So it would fall under that. Oh, good.
So right away, that takes it off the list.
Oh, good. I am much happier now, thank you. Okay. Anyone else on page thirteen? No? Page fourteen, appeals, maintenance?
Well, I mean, that, sorry, that was a point of extensive discussion, as far as homeowners actually, or property owners, I think is a better term, property owners actually maintaining, you know, their trees. I think that, that's, this is one area, regardless of how thorough the, the ordinance is, I think it's, it's just, it's inherently an ongoing challenge in any city, is getting a property owner to appropriately care for their trees, to where it doesn't cause nuisance down the line. I think it unfortunately becomes a complaint-based approach, usually a, a neighbor or a community member saying, you know, whether it's a public safety concern or a property damage concern, that, you know, I think the language that's in here is the, pretty much the, the best sort of framework that we could have. Now, Doug, did you have any other comments on that? Because we had a lot of, I mean, I feel like we discussed that.
Yeah, and, and I think we have to sort of steer, not to put words in Ken's mouth, but, but there's an issue also, that the, we can only do so much in our city ordinance with respect to trees that are maintained by owners that are not private homeowners, but rather things like public utilities and railroads and things like that, because they have their own, you know, inadmissible rights to misuse and abuse us. And so the, this ordinance has to sort of navigate what we can actually enforce and what we can't.
And I'll, I'll just add to that, so, section C under 070 refers to abatement. If, so if, if that nuisance condition exists, and the property owner refuses to, to correct it, the city can come in and correct it and, and charge those costs to that, that owner, so, I, I don't know, it'd be a question for the city engineer, I don't know the answer on how often that already is happening, but I, I imagine it happens from time to time.
Moving on to page fifteen. I'm going to run with the banner on number one under B, is where it talks about, "All replacement trees shall be maintained by the property owner of five, under a five-year maintenance agreement with the city. The city may require that a bond or other security satisfactory to the city be posted to guarantee the performance of the owner's obligation under the maintenance agreement." And I was thrilled to see this, because we also have wondered with, again, several new construction of residences with massive tree removal, what assurance do we have that new trees planted won't be allowed to just founder saying, "Well, we satisfied what you told us to do, but we're not going to water them or take care of them." So I was really glad to see that there.
I commend...
I think it's important.
Yeah, that's a really, I think...
It's huge.
Yeah, strong, influential instrument to put.
Doug, you have any comments?
No.
And then the, the point under it that talks about penalties, and it, it's not, it's not like we want to be punitive, but, but I think it just underscores that, that these are agreements between a property owner and the city, and that we take it seriously. So I think it was really well-written in there. I was jumping up and down, I was really happy to see that.
And I'll, I'll have to give this, the city attorney some credit, and some of the language here, he...
Please do.
Very helpful.
Okay, so then we're, anything else on fifteen? We're nearing the end of it, and then we go back to the current, current ordinance, which I don't know if you have any comments on that, I don't know that we need to go through page by page. And the last part was the member of Open Space and Ecology Committee, Glenn Fieldman, who wrote a letter to the council. Well-written letter. So my commendations to the subcommittee, this had to be an awful lot of work, and I just think you're, you've done a tremendous job with it. Any other comments?
I just wanted to thank, thank Ken for doing it an awful, I mean, most of, the vast majority of this came to us, us whole cloth from Ken, with a lot of these issues already thought out, and numerous instances where he said, "Well, what about this issue?" And he'd say, "Well, look at page blah, blah, blah," and it was already there. So it really, it's a very tightly-written ordinance, in, in my opinion, and, I think is, is well worth recommending.
And thank you, it's my oversight to not thank you, Ken. It's that case of staff being taken for granted for your wonderful expertise.
Not at all, thank you.
And many hours of yours, I'm sure, to put that together, so... All right, it'll be interesting to see what Open Space does to it, if anything, but it looks very well-written, ready to go. All right, moving on.
If it, through the chair, I do have one other staff initiated item?
Oh, okay.
If, if you were...
No, no, please go ahead.
These are hot off the presses, Julie will be handing out some notification, I think you've all heard about the Home for All sort of program, the city's, the community engagement that the city's involved with. engagement that the city's involved with. And the first community conversation has been scheduled for March twenty-first. It was a Thursday night, one of, an off night from one of your, um, uh, planning commission meetings. The council's skipping their meeting that evening to allow for this event to occur. And I think we're really excited about having it and the point of sort of changing the community dialogue, more of a community conversation about-
Mark this.
The community's future in the context of, you know, what the Baylands may or may not mean to the city and, and sort of a community conversation in that regard. And everyone's invited to attend. As a commission, we'll probably have you more in an observer role than actually engaged in the actual tabletop discussions because you will have some role in the Baylands down the road. But I think it would be great for you to attend, sort of observe sort of the community discussion and certainly encourage you to invite your friends, your neighbors to, uh, to, uh, attend this. I think really looking at changing kind of the, the normal sort of dialogue we have in this room between staff and the commission and the public and really more of a, just a community discussion about things that matter to the community and the community's aspirations for itself. And eventually, hopefully those things will translate into, uh, into meaningful policies or programs or implementation steps that could be taken on the Baylands in the future.
And John, could you please clarify? I've heard various residents discussing this, some saying that this is a community-based workshop dealing with all of Brisbane. And then I've heard other people say, no, this is specifically being brought here to address the Baylands. So could you please clarify that for the public?
Well, I think, um, it really is addressing the community as a whole, the community's aspirations and goals, you know, some reflection of what our community values and what is important to the community overall. I think the idea that some of that will spin into, um, uh, some applicability to the Baylands later, but that's not the purpose of this particular community conversation. It's really to talk more about the community's, you know, goals and aspirations for the community as a whole.
And, and just to also underscore Home For All, we learned as planning commissioners at a seminar that they actually conducted these same conversations in two other cities last year. So this is not just Brisbane solely that is doing these type of discussions?
Actually, there were four last year.
Were there four? Okay.
Four, um, and every city has a different starting point in where they are and in certain arc of their interest in some of these community issues and housing in particular. And, you know, they're very aware of trying to suit what the community needs. It's not, we're going to fit into a home-for-all model. That's not really what we're doing is help the conver- conversation that this community in Brisbane needs to have, which is a different conversation than Redwood City or Portola Valley or Half Moon Bay had last year. This year, it's, I think, San Mateo and Pacifica are part of our cohorts who are doing the same sort of engagement, um, this year. But we're all in a different place and, and, you know, their job is to facilitate that community dialogue wherever the community needs it to go.
May I ask, um, is this the only one? Because my concern is that, one, um, my generation tends to work later, so you're going to lose a chunk of just-
Good point.
People who work late in tech, like no one's going to be able, I mean, everyone's going to get late to this if they come at all. But my concern is that if this is the only effort, we wouldn't necessarily get the, I use the term robust turnout that I would, that I would hope we would have. I think one of my observations and I'm just time view of, of, of the city here is that my times, you know, being a part of, of the, you know, local, uh, local community and civic engagement is that we don't necessarily have a broad spectrum of the community actually showing up for these types of things. And so I'm all in on stuff like this, whether the request is for me to promote it, to get more people here, I'm all in there. Whether I'm being asked to be kind of an active listener or a facilitator, you know, I'm not really sure kind of between the role as a commissioner and an active citizen in town, kind of how to straddle that in, in, in an environment like this.
Yeah, I think, I think you probably hit the, absolutely nailed it on, right on the head in terms of being an active listener because that I, I think is a role that we would expect that the council will take, that, you know, advisory body that will have some touch on the Baylands later, uh, would, would be doing as well. There'll also be a, a lot of robust reporting out of what happens at these meetings. I mean, the idea of, you're right. What is the perfect sweet spot for a meeting? We talked about, you know, we've done Saturday, we've done weekend events. There's always some, some issue that, that's going to preclude or inhibit somebody's participation. This will not be the only, uh, community, uh, conversation. There'll be another one, a follow-up one in, I believe, April. I don't know if it's going to be scheduled. They may try to schedule that on more of a weekend, uh, so, you know, cover the bases of people who are available in the evening. Uh, this one, you know, did make the point of emphasis on things like childcare-
Yeah.
Will be provided and, 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 and food. Food always puts people in a better mood. But, you know, to try to accommodate various sort of interests and, uh, but it might be that the next one is a weekend event. I would not be surprised again if the schedule allows for that, but those are points that are all well-taken. And I think we'll have some more conversation about sort of as a commissioner, what active listening in this particular exercise might mean and, uh, because really we haven't spent a lot of time on that part of it. But, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to get the word out, make sure everyone's aware of it and, and, you know, it is something that, that we are really, really interested and excited to see play out.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Thank you for your, your comments. I think they were really well-placed with regard to this. And we could always write to them as well and say, let's put some on the weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and, um, items initiated by the commission, I, I'd just like to circle back. So Ken, any comment suggestions we had, by the way, backing up on the tree ordinance, will you be the memorializer of any comment suggestions do, that we had from what your draft?
Right, so, um, so, yeah, I, I can provide, um, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this, John, or you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm thinking is to, to key on the main points. I heard general agreement with the ordinance, but there were a couple of points that, that were brought up that we can, um, mention in the minutes, of, of course, and that would go forward to the, um, city council. And, and, um, if there's anything to highlight in the staff report beyond that.
I didn't hear any specific, I heard, you know, some discussion about, those are things Ken will want to make sure highlighted in the minutes, but I didn't hear that the, there were any particular language changes that were-
No.
Recommended by the collective group here this evening to the ordinance? Or was it, did I miss something that you were looking at, a collective?
Well, I think from comments, Commissioner Seisong and myself, that, that enjoyment on the property part.
Yeah, um, so you were saying that all, all these fall into your, the application of your judgment, so that's something we shouldn't be really concerned about?
Right. I, I think this, I, I think allowing for flexibility in the ordinance for that, it's a, it's a discretionary permit essentially. And, and so, um, it's, it's hard to, with a discretionary permit, it, by its nature, you, you can't define everything. It's not like a height limit on a building and, and trees by their very nature are like individuals. Every, everyone is different and everyone is planted in its, its own location and, and so it's, it's really hard to gather everything into a, a tight-defined thing. Otherwise it'd be ministerial. So I, I think flexibility there is important. But by all means, we can, you know, we'll, we'll note this in the minutes and, and, and I, I think it's something that, um, Barbara Ebel and keyed into as well, as, as I mentioned in the, the staff report.
Anyone else want to chime in on that? No? Okay.
I guess it's only, it's only relevant if it's a non-protected tree, right? Because if it's a protected tree, the enjoyment of, I mean, the enjoyment of the property is going to be, have to be addressed in replanting the tree. So really, I mean, the only, the only part where I find that an issue is page twelve, well, page, page one twelve, where it says finding for granting a permit, the director's granting of a permit removal or of a tree shall be based on at least one of the following. And then it says enjoyment of the property. But when you read later, it says those five factors are present for the protected tree, right? Criteria for removal of protected tree, each application of removal of the protected tree shall be evaluated and determined for the following criteria. So is it a concern that someone can remove a tree for their enjoyment and not replant it? Because if it's a protected tree, they have to replant it. And then, then, then at that point, they'd probably make them specify, like, you're removing this tree as protected, you're saying it's for enjoyment, where are you going to plant it?
I, I think just-
Is that?
Going on anecdotal historical history is that what one person says, it doesn't matter, I'm going to replace it. And you'll find there are, some people get very upset about removal of a mature protected tree just because you want to enjoy your property in a different way, but they enjoy that tree and have for, you, you sometimes see a whole lot of neighbors get very upset about.
Because it's a fifteen-gallon tree versus a mature tree.
Well, and, and maybe historically it's granted shade on all the surrounding properties and removing it, suddenly everyone's baking in the sun and you say, well, I'm going to replace it. Not you-
Right.
Obviously, but someone says, I'm going to replace it. And it's going to take how many years to reach?
So maybe the issue isn't that, like, it's a, and it's for, it's, maybe the issue isn't that, um, one of the criteria is for the enjoyment. It's that the, like you said earlier, that neighbors should have an opportunity to have notice and comment.
So that they maybe, they maybe have chance, they don't get a, they don't just suddenly see someone showing up to remove it.
Right. And so, so the notice is, is embedded in this section as well for a permit-required tree.
Also, I could note that, that, again, under the discretion of the department or the, the planners, they can require a larger replacement tree if they deem appropriate. So it's not necessarily a big old grandfather tree replaced by a fifteen-gallon tree.
Very good.
Need not be.
That helps.
So when the notice, the notice requirement is to the city, there's a seven-day notice requirement to the city. Is that notice, does that notice mean that neighbors will have an opportunity to know that that tree's coming down somehow?
So there's two different notices. One is, um, on notice required trees that are not permit required. And that is, so the city will develop a form essentially that, that people can fill out, complete and provide that notice when they're taking down a, a tree that's not a permit-required tree. The other case is a notice on a protected tree of, of the city's, uh, decision on, on that.
I, I guess I'm more asking like the form of the notice. So it, does notice mean like I, I want to cut my tree down in seven days, so I'm going to now apply for this permit seven days before I'm cutting down the tree?
I, I think there are two different things going on here. If you have a non-protected tree, right?
Yep.
You don't need a permit from the city. You don't need to go through those findings. You just have to provide notice to the city if it's a non-protected tree. If you, it is a protected tree as defined in this ordinance, then that's where the neighbors receive notification on if it's a ten-day notice or what the notice length is.
It's, uh, seven days. Both, both are seven days. So under this section oh five oh- You have subsection A-
Right.
And subsection B. So A is those notice-required trees. So that's for severe trimming or removal of a non-protected mature tree or two trees. And so that's just a notice from the, the owner to the city and it gives the city time to actually verify that, yes, in fact, it is a non-protected tree and, and they can remove it if, um, if we see something amiss there, it gives us time to stop them. On a permit-required tree, that's where the notice is out to the neighbors, out to three hundred feet, actually three hundred-foot radius. And it would be a notice as to the action of the director.
So is it an issue that there's no notice to neighbors on non-protected trees?
It can be at times.
Right.
It can be because you, you might have a non-protected large tree that someone tells the city in seven days it's coming down and the neighbors go, wait a minute.
Well, actually, I mean, I think the issue would be it would come down and then the neighbors would be like, oh, wait a minute, how come we didn't know about it?
Well, that usually happens.
Right.
It does happen. I've seen it happen. So.
The vast, vast majority of trees that come down, um, don't have those kind of issues raised, but yes, occasionally there is a, a tree that, that comes down that, that has drawn attention and, and interestingly, the one, one or two that come to mind were actually tied to a planning commission approval of, of a development project. So it's kind of a, it's, it's interesting.
Well, and when the notices go to the neighbors about a project, I don't think all the neighbors read through the fine detail about trees, removal, footprint of buildings. They'll look at a, a project. They don't always read all the, the fine detail.
Well, the notices, sorry for me to bump in, but we always do state in a notice if , uh, trees are going to be removed and so in the-
You do.
Three sentences. Yeah.
Yes, agreed. And that, that's important. I think that's really good. So even if they don't look at plans, it's there. Did you have more, Commissioner Patel?
No, I was just trying to clarify what-
Oh, yeah.
What the enjoyment issue was because it seemed as though there was an issue with enjoyment, but it seems as though it's just a notice issue, right?
Well, we were, we were talking more in terms of someone justifying what they considered enjoyment. I, I think the issue for me was just the word enjoyment. I, I just want to, to ask someone to substantiate, give me a good cause why it should be done. Why is it necessary? Give me a good cause, not just, I'd enjoy taking this tree out.
I mean, I think some people would say, well, it's my property, my backyard.
They would. Agreed.
Right.
Agreed. And, and again, I'm okay, the, the key word there that maybe I just breezed past, necessary. And I think that, that helps. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so you will convey our changes, edits. All right, we move on. Tonight is our selection of planning commission officers since we're in 2019. And to start that, I would like to first thank my fellow commissioners for bearing with me and having patience for my stumbling over some things now and then. And we have a really great group of commissioners, so, um, it's made my job easy and hopefully for staff as well because you're all very inquisitive and kind of pick up the ball running and really look into things and bring your own points of views and insights here with good questions. And it's really been a pleasure to serve with you and going forward. But we need, do need some new officers, so, um, I would entertain staff, I don't know if you need to chime in here, but I would entertain some motions, starting with the chair, and I have a motion to make myself. I'll start. I would like to make a motion for Commissioner Seisong to become chair. And we have to hear from you whether or not you would accept that nomination.
Yes, thank you, and I would accept the responsibility, so, thank you.
Okay. And do we have any other nominations for chair? And so do we have a second on the nomination?
Uh, I second the nomination for Commissioner Seisong.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Congratulations, Commissioner Seisong.
Big shoes to fill.
No, no, no problem, I'm sure, anyone here? And then secondly, we need a vice chair. Do we have a motion for vice chair?
I would move, um, for Mr. Gooding, Commissioner Gooding to be vice chair.
And a second?
I second. Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Gooding. So, we will move on to adjournment. If we could have a motion, our next meeting will be Thursday, March fourteen, 2019, at seven thirty.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.